It is 5:00. And I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember McEckern?
Here.
Councilmember Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here. This is the time we have public comments, and I do have a card. So I will call Pastor Robert Richardson. Now you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, the mayor and the council. If you remember, ugly face, I was here a couple of weeks ago, talking concerning the issues that were having in our neighborhood, gun warfare, and problems with investors that not vetting their people that come that they're allowed to rent to. I know the city clerk had gave me information that the chief of police will be here at 6:00. When I was here before, there was a reference that one of the officers would come because we trying to start a community watch. Community watch from the respond from the officers that have come out responding to certain incidents. Their complaint is nobody wants to say anything about what is going on, when there's gun, fire going on, or whatever the problems are. Nobody wants to speak up. But this is a terror now in our neighborhood, and we know that it's not just happening in our neighborhood, it's beginning in all the neighborhoods. Because a lot of folks have lost their homes, and the investors are renting to whoever they desire. And that desire of people that bringing elements from other cities that they gain warfare, they party, they all types of hours, they don't care about a community. Community is the last concern. So I have called the police department trying to get someone to come out to give us the legalities of how to start a community watch, or a neighborhood watch, so we can really start to do something about these elements that has come in. And we have grandchildren, I got a couple of my neighbors is here today, and we have grandkids that when those guns go off, we don't know who's shooting it, or where that bullet is going. And when I first came here over 24 years ago, Victorville was the ideal place to retire and just live your life. It was so nice and quiet 25 years ago. This has changed. We need any help and all help that we can get. Me being a pastor here in Victorville, I deal with a lot of folk all the time. Now, I know my time is almost up, but I deal with a lot of people, a lot of young people, middle-aged, old folk. And this same cry is in most churches in Victorville.
10 seconds left.
And we are asking for any response that we can get. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Now can we have declaration of closed session by a city attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have four closed session items. Three are on the regular agenda, and one is added as an addendum item. Handle the addendum item first. It's for the successor agency, and it's anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D4, one potential case. The other three items are, two of them pertain to existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956D1, and that is the SEC versus City of Victorville litigation. There's one item for the airport authority, and one item for the city council related to the same litigation. And then the last item is real property negotiations pursuant to government code 54956.8. The property location is the southwest corner of Armegosa and La Mesa roads. The assess a parcel set forth on the agenda, as are the negotiating parties. To the extent there is reportable action with respect to any of these items, we will report it at the conclusion of the closed session, or at the commencement of the 6:00 meeting.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak? There be no other business before the council. We recess to closed session, and we will convene at 6:00 PM. And I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember McEckern?
Here.
Councilmember Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here. And now may we have closed session announcements by the city attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had four closed session items this evening. Three are on the regular agenda. One item was on the addendum agenda. The addendum item was anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D4. On the regular agenda, we had two existing litigation items pursuant to government code 54956.9D1. They both pertain to litigation between SEC and the City of Victorville. Specific case numbers are set forth on the agenda. The fourth item was real property negotiations pursuant to government code 54956.8 pertaining to property at the southwest corner of Armegosa and La Mesa roads. The assess a parcels and negotiating parties are all set forth on the agenda. And there is no reportable action with respect to any of those items at this time.
Thank you very much. And now we will have the pledge of allegiance, the invocation first, and then the pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be delivered by Darryl Scott of Burning Bush Church, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Police Chief Sam Lucia. Please stand.
I'm okay with that. Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing our leaders together tonight. Guide them as they make their decisions, and guide all of our leaders, from the city to the county, to the state, to the federal government, as they make the decisions that you've charged them to make in their lives. Father, thank you especially tonight for sending your son Jesus Christ, who died for our sins, and we live on forever with you. We pray these things in his name. Amen.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the public for which it stands,
We do not have any presentations this evening. So at this time, may we have the clerk present the agenda, and any revisions for the record, please?
Yes, Mayor Garcia. The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item, or any item that does not appear on the agenda, are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby, and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to government code section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the city council. And there are no revisions to tonight's agenda, and that is all I have. Mayor Garcia.
Thank you. This is the time when we go into appeal hearings, however, we have none scheduled. Then we move on to public hearings, and also we have none scheduled. So we will move on to consent calendar. And we have items C1 through C11, which can be approved with one motion, unless a council member wants to remove an item for discussion.
I would like to remove items C10 and C11 for a separate vote.
C11?
C10 and C11 for a separate vote.
And we have a motion to approve items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9.
I'll move for approval.
Second?
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Cox, to approve items C1 through C9. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Item C10.
I don't have a discussion, it's just that I can't vote yes on those, and so I require you, there can be a motion to approve 10 and 11, I simply am going to vote no.
So move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries with Mr. Cox voting no on C10, C11.
Now we're going to written communications. D1, item D1, comprehensive annual financial report.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we have Ken Alimon, our partner with the auditing firm, to give you a brief presentation.
Thank you very much. I'm pleased to present my report to you concerning the audit of your annual financial I have a brief presentation, and what I've done is in these slides, I've summarized the information that's contained in your financial statements. On this first slide, I've identified the assets and liabilities of the city as of the fiscal year end. I think it'll come up pretty soon. As you can see from this slide, the slide shows the financial position of the city as of the fiscal year end. It shows that cash has increased from the prior year to $133 million. Land and capital assets have declined primarily due to, or completely due to, the annual depreciation charges that are required in government financial statements. And the liabilities have declined due to principal reduction. On this slide here, I've summarized the revenues and expenses of the city combined, all funds combined together, for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2014. As you can see from this slide, the revenues for 2014 are less than those for 2013, and that's primarily due to the fact that in 2013, there were higher-than-normal legal settlements, the Carter-Burges settlement, and higher-than-normal grants and contributions. Expenses were also higher in, or higher in 2014 compared to 2013, primarily due to increases in public safety contracts and public works projects. After you add back the non-cash depreciation, which is a part of the expenses, and you deduct the cash that was paid out for debt reduction, we could see that the city ended its financial fiscal year with adjusted excess revenues of $16 million. The city's general fund is often a good reflection of the city's overall general financial health. And the financial status of the City of Victorville's general fund is comparable to that of the prior fiscal year. On this slide here, I've also isolated out of the general fund, the revenues that were earned in fiscal year 2014, and the expenditures that were paid out of the general fund in You could see that for 2014, revenues exceeded expenditures by $185,000. There's a substantial increase of revenues over expenses in the prior year, again due to the piece of the Carter-Burges settlement that accrued to the benefit of the general fund. On this next slide, I've analyzed the general fund revenues to isolate the cause for the increased total revenues for the general fund compared to that for 2013. And you could see from this slide that the increases in revenues for the general fund in 2014 were primarily due to increases in tax revenues, primarily property and sales tax revenues, and charges for services in the general fund. On this next slide, I've analyzed the expenditures for the general fund compared to that of the prior fiscal year. And you could see from this slide that the expenditures in the general fund were higher in 2014 compared to 2013, primarily due to increases in general government cost and public safety cost. As you know, the purpose of a financial statement audit is to draw a conclusion about whether or not there is a risk of significant or material misstatement reflected in your financial statements for the fiscal year that is being reported upon. When that risk of material misstatement is low, the auditor gives an unmodified or clean opinion on your financial statements, which is the opinion that we have expressed in your financial statements this year. I do want to comment on the fact that next year, your financial statements are going to look quite a bit different. That is because the Government Accounting Standards Board has mandated that all local, state and local governments in the United States reflect in the financial statements next year, on their balance sheet for the first time, their true obligation for pension benefits that have been accrued to employees for services rendered through the date of those financial statements. Previously, that information has not been on your balance sheet as a liability, and has simply been disclosed in general terms in your footnotes. And so this is a major change in financial reporting that all local governments will have to contend with, and our firm is taking a lead role in working with calpers to make sure that all agencies here in California do get the information that they will need on a timely basis. I do want to comment on the fact that in January, just a couple of months ago, prior to finalizing the financial statements, I did meet with the audit committee, and we went over the audit results in detail with the audit committee. We reviewed a draft of the financial statements. We discussed our internal control recommendations. We discussed new accounting changes, and we reviewed the results of our audit testing. The audit process itself went very well this year. As a matter of fact, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the tremendous improvement that we've seen over your accounting processes over the last three fiscal years. We were able to finish the audit this year in December, met with the audit committee in January, which is right in line with our other clients of comparable size and complexity. I appreciate very much the hard work that your staff has taken on to bring the city's accounting processes to the condition in which they are at today. And as I mentioned earlier, we performed all of the tests that are required by the auditing standards, and have concluded, without modification, that your financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. And that completes my comments regarding your audit.
Thank you very much. Good news.
Thank you, absolutely.
How can I have an audit report without a question?
Yes, sir.
We, Ken, you talked about the pension liability that will be recorded next year on the financials. Do you want to, I've been throwing around the general term of about $20 million. Do you want to comment on that? Do you think it'll be in that ballpark?
If we look at, I'm going to refresh my memory here. If we look in your financial statements on page 78 and 79 of your financial statements, it does identify on page 80, actually, the unfunded liability as of June 30, 2012, of about $16 million. That number's going to be massaged a little bit by calpers, because it doesn't reflect with absolute precision the fair value of your planned assets as of June 30, 2012. And that information, calpers is working on that information as we speak. And of course, we're talking about 2015 next year, which is three years further down the road from June 30, 2012. And so I think an approximation of 20 million is a reasonable approximation.
And do you think they will be able to provide that information by June of 2015?
All indications at this point are that they will be on track to provide that information. They expect to have it ready by early summer. But as you know, with any complex endeavor, the problems generally present themselves in the last 5% of the timeline. That's when you find the surprises. If that, there should be a hiccup in their timeline, we're going to keep your audit on track, and actually physically prepare your financial statements, ready to drop in the numbers as soon as we get it from them. I personally, I'm a man of optimism, but I personally believe that calpers will come in true to form and give you the information that you need, certainly in time for a timely release of your financial statements, but there's no guarantees.
The other 800-pound gorilla I've been talking about in the room is on page 82, which is the post-employment liability, which, as we've discussed, will not be recorded next year, and it may be, what, four, five years away?
About three years after that.
Is there any hope of actually calculating that number?
There is. And so, and you'll have to hire your own actuary to calculate that number. And that number's actually going to be easier to calculate, in the sense that it doesn't have the complexity, it's complexity of being all bound up in the cal, the calper system for defined benefit pension plans, involves a lot of, all of the local governments practically, and the state of California. And it's very difficult for calpers to sort through all of that and identify for each local agency their share of the obligation. Your post-employment Medicare, medical retiree benefits are more strictly isolated from the obligations and assets of all other local governments in California. So it's going to be a more straightforward process for your actuary. It has its own particular complexities, because the actuary has to get very involved in projecting future increases in healthcare costs, and the constantly increasing lifespans that we are all benefiting from with medical enhancements. And so that complicates their measurement, but it's something that they are trained to do, and I see no difficulties. Thank you.
Ken, good to see you.
Good to see you, sir.
We are still here.
You are still here.
So are you.
You were a prophet.
I will bring that up every year, you're back in front of us.
I think you should.
Just to remind you that there was a point in time where there was a going concern as to whether or not we would be here. But can we go back to that slide where it talked about revenue? I think it was maybe the second or third slide? There were some huge differentials there, and I was hoping perhaps you could explain those to the council.
Was it on revenues?
I believe so. If we can go back there. Yeah, that slide. Intergovernmental, literally up $1 million, over $1 million in charges for services. You talked about the taxes as being part of it. What is, and perhaps this is you or Doug, the intergovernmental, why is it up so much one year to the next?
Generally, intergovernmental is grant-related revenues, but I don't know, maybe staff can give more detail?
Yeah, I don't recall. I'm trying to rack my brain, and I don't know if Pat has it at the top of her head that she could tell us. Certainly, we can get that to you tomorrow.
And that's fine. I don't necessarily need the answer tonight. I just, I was curious. That's quite a jump from one year to the next, especially in that one category. It'd be interesting to know also, charges for services, why that increases.
Yeah, we'll get that out to the council tomorrow.
That couldn't be the lighting fee that we didn't charge.
Well, yeah, it wasn't, yeah, I don't think that was in play yet. And then the other question is, going back to the previous discussion, on the liability that we're going to incur in next year's financial reports, just so I can get you on the record. Will that cause you and your firm to give going concerns with respect to all governmental entities because of that liability? Because I would hate for you to get back here next year and say, because of this $20 million liability that we have to book, and your inability to pay it tomorrow, if you had to, we have a going concern with respect to your city. Because if you're going to do that to us, you would have to do that to every city that you audit, I would imagine.
Correct. And I'm very happy, actually, that you asked that question. No, that will not be the result. The reason is that the auditing standards give a very precise definition of going concern issues. And primarily, they're focused on your ability to pay your obligations as they become due for approximately a one-year period after the balance sheet date. And so the fact that we're going to be putting it on your balance sheet, a very real obligation that you've always have had, but that's long-term in nature, does not change the underlying reality that you've demonstrated your ability to pay your bills as they become due. And unless something changes, and it won't be the pension, but unless something else changes, we won't be challenging that assertion.
Okay. And then the only thing, other thing I would like to point out is with respect to the post-employment benefit plan. It's interesting, I know you indicated that we'd have to bring on our own actuarial, and that their job ought to be easy. Quite frankly, I don't know how their job could be easy, when just today, the city received the renewal on its medical with a 40% increase from last year. Obviously, that's not sustainable over time.
Correct.
And I don't know how any actuarial can plan for that, so.
They make a lot of assumptions and have a lot of caveats, but it's a very imprecise science, but they do the best job they can with the data at hand.
Well, anyway, good to see you, and thank you for answering.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Good questions from all.
Other questions? Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Now we move to item D2, sale of real estate, Amber Point.
Madam Mayor, do we need to approve or
Oh, yes, we do.
Or accept and file the annual report?
Accept and file. So move.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, now we do move to item D2, sale of real estate, Amber Point. The Victorville Housing Trust Board of Directors ratify the execution of the standard offer agreement and escrow instructions for purchase of real estate by Inbetween Palladio Development LLC and the Victorville Housing Trust for the sale of property known as Amber Point 0395-212-09, and approve an additional appropriation of revenue in the amount of $69,302.
Question for the record. If the council votes to sell the property, where do the proceeds go, and what account, and what can it be used for?
These proceeds are proceeds of the Victorville Housing Trust, which was the entity formed in response to the redevelopment dissolution to handle the housing assets. These monies are intended to be used to help supplement These monies are intended to be used to help supplement ongoing remediation and monitoring at the New Way site in downtown. In fact, I would expect 100% of these funds to be used for that site.
One else?
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion by Mr. McAcrin, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Now we have item D3, piggyback purchase of a John Deere 410L backhoe loader. The recommendation is that the City Council award John Deere construction, retail, sales, a piggyback purchase of a John Deere 410L backhoe loader in the amount of $135,554.56 under the National Joint Powers Alliance and JPA Contract 060311 as budgeted for the fiscal year ending 2014-2015 Capital Improvements Project CIP Budget.
Move for approval?
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Item D4, service provider agreement for runway 17/35 design services. The Board of Directors of the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority approve, number one, consultant professional services provider agreement by in-between the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority and Parsons Brinkley-Hof for runway 17/35 design services in the amount not to exceed $854,111.83. And going on to two, an additional appropriation in the amount not to exceed $154,111.83.
Madam Mayor, just a question on this. Keith, I think I understand. The FAA is covering 90% of the $854,000? Is that right?
That is correct. The way this will work is we will actually spend the money first, and there's a grant expected to be awarded in September. The grant that we're expecting to be awarded in September, sorry. The grant that we're expecting in September, based upon conversations we've had with the FAA, is going to be to the order of $5.5 million. So that would help reimburse the funds that we pay upfront for the design work, and then the rest would be effectively used for construction.
So we will eventually be out of pocket $85,000 for the new runway.
What fund will be out $85,000?
This would be airport operations and the traditional match requirement for all of the FAA grants that we get, AIP-type grants. They're 90-10, so 10% matches.
Is any of this funding coming from the general fund?
No, this is airport operations.
The reason I ask this, there's still letters to the editor indicating we're spending money at the base that could be expended for police and fire. It's not true, but it's still being said for purposes of causing hate and discontent, not as to inform the public. And so I hope that the staff would always make the distinction about the operations of SCLA and the city and the distinction between the two and the funding between the two.
I think I would just add, just for larger discussion and just to remind you all, we're currently under construction for one of our runways right now. We've got about $3.5 to $4 million being spent on the reconstruction of the Crosswind Runway. We've actually shifted gears. We are intended to continue repairing various sections throughout runway 321, as we call it. But we've started discovering much more emerging needs and more important needs on your primary runway. So this actual design work is for the primary runway, the long one, 1735. And we expect, I believe, through fiscal year 2018, I believe it is. We've actually got grants being programmed for continuous phases of improvement to 1735. So this isn't going to fix all of it, but we're going to have to phase the funding of it over many years.
We're replacing the asphalt with some kind of concrete material. Will the entire runway then be concrete?
You know what? If I can, let me have Eric Ray, he's the airport manager, come on up. One of the things that I'd like to share with him is what we're seeing out there as conditions. And the larger issue that we're running into is the design and the construction undertaken by the military, certainly much different purpose and supporting different uses back when it was operating military. So we're actually seeing with the type of aircraft that we have now, some pretty heavy beating out there. And we're also finding a mix-match of different types of materials and structural sections used. So maybe to answer his question and maybe also talk about some of the conditions we have out there.
As it's currently planned, it would be replacement-like for kind. So in the case of the asphalt section, they'd be replaced with asphalt. Concrete section likewise. That's FAA's general preference. If we can show a significant advantage to concrete without and still offset the cost, then they'll certainly listen to that, but it's a hard argument to make. Specifically, where our problem has been is what's beneath the top layer. The FAA's view is that if you build the bottom right, you build the layers, you build the sections, the top is nothing but a wear course, and there's some truth to that. So our concern is building, and quite frankly, our high dollar is not on the material up top. It's the labor that goes underneath the top pavement.
Can we have a requirement that materials be provided locally?
No, we don't.
Can we?
No, we cannot.
Federal dollars?
Federal dollars, that's correct. However, laws of economics state that typically materials are bought locally. The trucking costs to truck up here, up the hills, are pretty significant.
Especially on concrete.
Especially on concrete. Asphalt likewise. In the case of Baldi Brothers that's here now, they're going to make their batch, their own material on-site, but they still have to buy the rock, the oils and things of that nature. They're not going to haul it from Timbuktu and pay the trucking charge. They can't afford to do that.
And the asphalt can take that landing weight as well as the concrete?
Absolutely. It can. Any design that comes forth has to meet the FAA's requirement of 20 years. We expect more than 20 years. A good solid pavement should last you 25, 30 years.
Anything else?
Thank you.
I'll move for approval.
Motion by Mr. McAcrin, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Now we move to item D5, negotiating agreement with COM AB. That the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Board of Directors approve the negotiating agreement with COM AB subject to minor non-substantiative changes.
I'll move for approval. Second.
Motion by Mr. McAcrin, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Now we have item D6, vacation hours. The recommendation is that the City Council approve the revised vacation accrual. Are there any questions?
The recommendation, Madam Mayor, the recommendation on the second page of the memorandum from Doug Robertson, page 314, goes into the amount of hours that would be related to the work week and time. If you turn to page 321, 321, I don't disagree with this. I agree with it. I think it's very generous, though. I think this should be pointed out of all these cities that were surveyed. One allows after the 20 years, 240 hours. One allows 200 hours. One, 184. One, 180. 10, 160. And this is at 200. And so it's extremely generous, but based upon where we have been, where we're going, and considering that we do consider the total compensation package, it appears to me, and I have to say that this appears to be very generous. One of the things that I have been, received information on, and I'm going to ask the attorney to clarify this, is that if somehow the package was given to the employees, that it's a contract and can never be taken away. That's contrary to everything I've always been told, but it's 100% what employees keep telling me, that somehow there's a contractual agreement that cannot be reduced. Mr. Attorney, is that true or not?
I'm not aware that that would be the case.
It's not the case. I want the employees to understand that. If the City Council decides that it's going to be topped out at 160, it's 160, and there's no contract. It's broken. You don't have a contract. I don't know how it got started. I heard this over and over and over. In fact, I've had some employees indicating that no matter what the pay or the benefits were, it can't be taken away. It's just not true. I don't know who's telling you that, but please get it corrected. It's not true. I wanted to correct that. That's all I have to say.
How many weeks is the 200 hours?
That's five weeks for our top earners.
My own opinion is, of all the bad choices we have here, and they're all bad, that this is the least bad that I've seen. And that's the only reason I can come up with supporting it. It does the least damage, I think.
I would agree. I think four weeks is the norm in the private sector, but I also note that the years of service, 11 to 15, I'm lucky if I have someone serve on that outside envelope of 11 to 15. Generally, in the private sector, you see a lot more turnover. In the public sector, people tend to stay a little bit longer. So I think you are rewarding them for staying those 16-plus years. May not be as lucrative as what they get today, but I think it's a happy medium, and I'm supportive of it.
But this takes effect immediately with all employees, am I right?
As with the rest of the class and comp schedule, this is sort of, was packaged with, it would be a July 1 implementation date, yeah.
Move approval?
I'll second. Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Now we have public comments. Public comments on items of interest to the public. I do have a card. Jerry J. Laws. And you have three minutes, sir.
Okay. Jerry Laws, 144 Lostar Avenue, Victorville. And by the way, my flagpole fell down when we had that big wind. It just happened to be at the same angle as we raised it on Uojima. If you go by the house now, you'll find it's back to the same angle because I put a rebar down the hole to hold it up. But at least it's flying again. Now, gun rights, as you know how the federal government's doing, and some of the states and local communities are going. The gun rights are going downhill pretty fast. Remember, you folks are the ones closest to the community because that's where we live. So let's see if we can't get, make sure we find out what kind of rights. I didn't get the paperwork filled out. I was asked to find out from the city attorney what laws we have on the books in our community here on gun rights. There better not be any. The federal constitution is very clear about it. In fact, if you have any gun rights against the constitution and state constitution on the right to keep bare arms, then you literally have broke your oath to the state and federal constitution when you raised your hands. Infringement's very simple. 1959 dictionary says it very clear. If you infringe, you broke the law. And with the things that are going nuts down all over the country with people shooting, we've got a problem. So let's take care of gun rights. Let's make sure our community is not over-regulated, not over-taxed. We surely don't need that. Now, of course, you're back down to where we only have, we're always closed on Fridays, so that gives everybody a three-day off, basically. That's good. You've helped save us a lot of money along that line, too. But there again, you want to get the regulations in the city down to practically hardly anything, basically. You want the taxation as much as you can cut down. I know we have to pay for when the pipe went out over there where the new freeway over ramp is. So I guess that's about it. I won't say anything about St. Patty's Day because we're not allowed to say that, but just don't drink too much on St. Patty's Day, all righty? So gun rights, period. When you took your oath here, the most sacred thing you can give in this office or anywhere in the United States of America is your oath before God, family, and your country. So that's your first one. The second one, if you die for your country, for your God, family, and country, and community, that's your second one. So thank you very much, and take care of yourselves, and see if we can make this the number-one community in the United States. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, by the way, we do own that mine out here in Calico.
You have 18 seconds, Mr. Law.
I'll talk a little bit again about it. Pay our county bills, our city bills, and go from there, all right?
Thank you. Now we go into reports from City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of things. Yesterday, I had the enjoyment, as I know some of you did too, of reading to, I had a first-grade class, actually, that I read several books to at Liberty Elementary as part of Read Across America Day, celebrating Dr. Seuss's birthday. This coming Thursday morning, I will be speaking, I'm one of a, a member of a panel and moderating at the Cobalt Banker Commercial Real Estate Symposium. And then wanted to remind the council and the public that this coming Sunday, the 8th, is an evening affair put on by the Chamber of Commerce at the mall. If you don't have tickets yet, we could probably acquire some for you. That's for the council, not the public. Anyway, it's a good event.
Thank you. Anyone else? Reports from City Council members?
Madam Mayor, I just want to say, I had the wonderful opportunity this morning of going to Lomitas Elementary School and reading to three classes of third graders. They kept the discussion going so long, I never got finished and got to the fourth class. I don't remember being that cute and sweet when I was a third grader, but this was wonderful.
Wait a minute. He said you weren't.
He was my teacher. I want to really compliment the teachers at Lomitas and all around the city for backing this Read Across America. As I told these kids this morning, it is the most important skill we will ever develop in our lives. When you can read, you can do anything. When you can't read, there's just a ton of things you can't do, and the world is closed. And I think these kids really enjoyed the whole experience that we had of doing the reading. And I know you were saying similar kind of thing. Anyway, it was great, and I'd like them to get great credit for that.
And it was very rewarding, and the main thing they wanted to know was if I had gone to the White House and met the president. And of course, I haven't. I think you were there also.
Yeah, it was an awesome experience, and as I indicated to you, much easier than running one of these meetings. But now, just reading to kindergartners and third graders yesterday, both at Village and Paso del Sol. It's a great thing to see our elementary school district doing that on an annual basis. Awesome to see the mayor there, myself, Mr. Kennedy, and I know that a lot of other folks from throughout the city volunteered as well. So looking forward to doing that again in the future.
Me too. Anything else? No other business before the council. I adjourn this meeting.